Really want to apologize for the delay. Traffic coming east was bad today. So I'm sorry to keep you waiting. You know that's a rarity in this committee. Today is Tuesday, the 29th. Mr. Clerk, why don't you walk us through what we've got and then we'll begin. And I'm joined today by my colleague, Marquis Harris Dawson, so we do have a court.
Good morning, sir. We have 13 items on the agenda. Item number one is motion Wesson-Buscano relative to an exemption to the suspension of city travel to Arizona for the purposes of permitting two Los Angeles Police Department employees to travel to Arizona for necessary training and continuing education and certification. Items number two through 13 are resolutions relative to including in the city's legislative program. Item number two is support for Assembly Bill 291, the Immigrant Tenant Protection Act of 2017, which would establish numerous legal protections against the disclosure of tenants' immigration or citizenship status to federal immigration authorities. Item number three is resolution Rue O'Farrow relative to prohibiting a health facility from discriminating or retaliating in any manner against any patient, employee, member of medical staff, or any other healthcare worker of the facility because that person has refused an assignment that violates nurse-to-patient ratio regulations. Item number four is resolution Wesson-Bloomenfeld regarding opposition to Senate Bill 649, which would provide that a small cell is permitted use, not subject to a city or county discretionary permit if that small cell meets specified requirements. Item number five is resolution Court's Rue relative to support for Senate Bill 49 to prevent any rollback of current federal environmental protections. Item number six is resolution Senate Bill 50 regarding ensuring that any federal public lands in California will remain in public hands, managed for the benefit of all Californians and preserved for future generations. Item number seven is resolution Sadio Harris-Dawson relative to support for Senate Bill 724, which makes significant revisions to the division of oil, gas, and geofural resources processes concerning hazardous and deserted wells and facilities in hopes of further reducing associated public health, safety, and environmental risks. Item number eight is resolution Hughes Our Price relative to support for SCR 9 that would designate a segment of State Highway 134 in Los Angeles County between State Highway 2 and Interstate 210 as the Barack H...I'm sorry, the President Barack H. Obama Highway. Item number nine is resolution Court's Bloomenfeld et al. relative to support for Senate Bill 100, which establishes a target of generating 100% of the state's retail sales of electricity from renewable sources by 2045. Item number 10 is resolution Harris-Dawson-Rue-Buscano relative to support for Senate Bill 349, which would require chronic dialysis clinics to maintain specified staffing ratios. Item number 11 is resolution Harris-Dawson-Bon and Wesson relative to support for HR 2952, the Foster Youth Mentoring Act of 2017. Item number 12 is resolution Rue-Wesson-Price relative to support for Senate Bill 10 and federal Senate Bill 1593, which seeks to reform or replace money bail systems. Item number 13 is resolution Rue-Coritz-Rodriguez relative to support for Assembly Bill 1000, which would strengthen protections for the ecologically fragile Mojave Desert by ensuring any water transfers from its groundwater basins do not adversely affect the region's natural and cultural resources. And for items two through 12, we do also have CLA reports on those items, and we have cards on all items.
Okay, let me call up Mr. Herman. He's got the cards. You get two minutes. And Sergeant, if you could move that center chair.
Two fucking minutes to hear this? What? We need a TAFT at 213-486-4710 for necessary training and continuing education in Arizona? Fuck you! Save our money! Number two, sanctuary cities against the Immigrant Tenant Protection Act? Fuck you, Donald Trump! Stop these programs against these assholes who take our money, and we need it for citizens of America to embed ourselves. Number three, AB 1102 regulations? No! Fuck you too! Nurses-to-patient racial regulations, asshole! Don't put people's health at risk! Number four, fuck you SB 649, Wesson, a small cell is permitted use. Number five, fuck you Kevin DeLeone, also, and fuck you on item number nine! And then on your rollbacks, regarding Xite and Porter Ranch SB 49, fuck all of you! Item six, Native Americans say to you, "This is Native American public lands in California", and fuck you too! Then I go to the next item, asshole, on item seven, Porter Ranch concerning hazardous facilities. Then item eight, the CARE Act for Obama Highway? Fuck Obama! He does nothing for my fucking care, let alone your mental health for being late! Then I go to item nine, Bloomfield, the fucking Jew, I don't care, Kevin DeLeone's an asshole! And then item number 10 relates to item number three, patient racial regulations, you stupid fucks! Put the money where it goes for patient racial regulations, asshole! Then, final one, item 11, bail air teacher fucks a young 16-year-old kid mentoring children for foster care like our LAPD cadets and explorers! Fucking young kids! Fuck you!
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Why don't we...Mr. Clerk, I think the only other item where we have cards is item 13.
That's correct.
So why don't we take action on items one through 12? So with...without objection, items one through 12 will be deemed approved? That brings us to item 13. Would you read that again?
Certainly. Item number 13 is resolution Rue-Coritz-Rodriguez relative to including in the city's 2017 18-state legislative program, support for Assembly Bill 1000, Friedman, which would strengthen protections for the ecologically fragile Mojave Desert by ensuring any water transfers from its groundwater basin do not adversely affect the region's natural and cultural resources.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna start out with...I have cards, so we're gonna do a minute per person. This is one item. Monica Valencia, Valencia, Jim Leach, come forward, John Harkel, Wes May. Yes. Go.
Thank you. Honorable committee members, I am Monica Valencia, and I'm here in my capacity as Communications Director of the California Association of Mutual Water Companies, CalMutuals, to oppose AB 1000 by Assembly Member Laura Friedman. CalMutuals represents more than 400 mutual water companies statewide. Our members are a combination of medium-sized and small community-owned, not-for-profit water utilities. AB 1000 seeks to create a new certification process for water conveyed in California's water transportation systems, something that is unprecedented. While the bill targets one specific project, it poses a potential threat to any infrastructure project in the state. The bill also seeks to impose additional state environmental review on a project that has already undergone environmental review under SEQA. If a project has been publicly reviewed...
Finish your statement.
Okay, if a project has been publicly reviewed and approved under SEQA, but there are questions about the validity of that environmental review, our court system is available for resolving those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, could I have the next speaker please come forward? Mr. Herman, don't disrupt this meeting again, okay? You were...people sat up here and listened to you, your statement. You're gonna sit here and listen to them. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I am Jim Leach with the Santa Margarita Water District. I only have a couple of brief points. We are in opposition to AB 1000, to the resolution. Santa Margarita is the lead public agency on the Cadiz Project, which is the subject of AB 1000. And irrespective of anything else, the bill is aimed at impeding the progress of a lawfully... of a lawful, fully-integrated, fully-litigated project. AB 1000 is a gut and amend bill rolled out late in the session. It has, as I indicated, one target, one project. If passed, however, it will have the effect of rendering useless the lawful and required environmental reviews that have already been met, challenged, and proven. As I said, the project has been thoroughly and finally vetted publicly, SEQA-approved, fully-litigated. Yield and recharge will be monitored and controlled by the County of San Bernardino as a responsible agency under their groundwater management, monitoring, and mitigation plan. We urge you to oppose this bill, not only because it's an impact on this project, but because of the long-term harm it will cause to the future legal SEQA reviews. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So if I could have the next speaker, and then after Mr. May, Sarah from BizFed, Scott Slater. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Chairman. I'm John Hakel. I'm the Executive Director of a group called the Southern California Partnership for Jobs. We represent 2,750 contractors and 90,000 unions, folks. We are here to oppose the same bill, AB 1000. We believe it has been vetted thoroughly. We believe that it needs to be sunsetted for now or put off to hold for more discussion. So at this point in time, we ask you not to act on this. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could have the next speaker?
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Sarah Wiltfong, and I'm here on behalf of BizFed. We're a grassroots alliance of over 160 business organizations that represent over 325,000 employers with over 3 million employees in LA County, and we are here to express our strong opposition also to AB 1000. Since 2009, the Cadiz Valley Water Conservation Recovery and Storage Project has been extensively studied, publicly reviewed, approved under California's stringent environmental laws. It was challenged by opponents of the project in over 12 separate cases, and each and every time, it was held up in its entirety. It is for these reasons that we find AB 1000 so concerning. If it acted, it will have far-reaching negative impacts on the entire Southern California water community. The transportation of water in existing conveyance systems is already a highly-regulated process that must also follow SEQA. So we just encourage you to also vote no on AB 1000. Thank you.
Thank you. So next speaker, Scott Slater, Wes May, Brian Villalobos, Terry Foreman. If I called your name, please come forward.
My name is Brian Villalobos. I work with Geoscience Support Services. I've been practicing hydrogeology, Southern California, for about 27 years. One of the main claims against the Cadiz Water Project and one of the justifications for AB 1000 is that the project will tap desert springs and that will cause irreparable damage to the Mojave Desert, especially the Mojave Desert Preserve and Mojave Trails Monument. These claims are patently false. I've been in the field, I know exactly what's going on out in that area. The watershed in which the Cadiz Water Project will operate varies in elevation from a rainfall in the mountains at 7,500 feet to dry lakes where the water evaporates at just above sea level. Project pumping will be located 1,000 feet above sea level. No springs, wetlands, or vegetation that depends on the groundwater are present at these elevations because groundwater table is too deep and well over 100 feet below ground surface. The roots of the plants in the area of these lower elevations are not even close to being able to reach the groundwater table. These plants depend upon rainwater and run off from occasional storms. Similarly...
Is that it? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next speaker, please come forward. Identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Terry Foreman. I'm the principal hydrogeologist working on the Cadiz Water Conservation, Storage, and Recovery Project, and I have over 30 years of experience throughout the Southwest. In any groundwater system, there's a balance between the water that comes in the basin and the water that goes out of the basin. That's been an area of major contention. We studied that in a lot of detail for this project, which is pretty unique in that regard, in that we hired the Desert Research Institute to actually measure the evaporation off the dry lakes in order to quantify what that amount of water is. So we have a good understanding of that balance, and we modeled those groundwater recharge and discharge scenarios with the operation of the project and found no environmental impacts whatsoever as a result of that modeling. In addition, the County of San Bernardino took that information and said regardless, we're going to limit the amount of drawdown that you can have in the basin to 80 feet and therefore control the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next speaker, and then if James Johnson, Saul Retiria, Sarah Friedman, please come forward, Samantha Waterman.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the committee, James Johnson, political director of the California League of Conservation Voters. It's always a blessing to be in this amazing room where we spent so much time dealing with the challenges of the city of Los Angeles and frankly, the world. I am not a learned scientist. I'm just somebody that believes that, at the end of the day, taking a position on a project that would destroy natural habitat and do it in the guise of folks who were working for the folks who want this to move and who now occupy leadership positions in the current administration in Washington, I just hope and pray that the Los Angeles City Council Rules Committee doesn't follow Trump, because this is what Trump wants, and we should...
Thanks, James. Congratulations on your new move. Okay, next speaker.
Good morning, Mr. President. My name is Saoud Renteria. I'm with the Southern California District Council of Laborers, representing our business manager, Armando Sparza. I am also a member of Laborers Local 300, proudly representing hundreds...probably representing over 30,000 workers throughout Southern California. We would ask that this committee oppose AB 1000, as this bill is a gut and amend bill, and specifically, this bill takes aim at the Cadiz Water Project, a project that would put over 6,000 people to work. Many of those people being put to work in a community and in a county where there is not many opportunities for work in the construction industry. We ask that...we know that these are good projects, projects that are gonna be...that are family-sustaining projects and put...be...having people to...able to afford to buy a house, put people...put food on families' table. And for these reasons, we would ask that AB 1000...that this board oppose AB 1000. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Friedman. I am with the Sierra Club. I am an LA resident and have been working on desert issues for around six years. And the desert and LA are very linked. Our residents use that area to recreate, to recharge, to set, to find peace. Our economies are also really linked. Desert tourism provides $6.4 billion to that local economy. You know, our own tourism economy is, I think, you know, in the $80 billion range. Those are all very connected. And this project would deplete desert resources, deplete that economy, and affect LA as well. Also, just want to say, like, we're not gonna get that many opportunities in LA to push back against the Trump administration. We don't have that many opportunities as a state. This is pretty much what we have here. You know, this project's moving forward because of the Trump administration, and we can't do much in California, but this is pretty much what we can do. And here in LA, I hope we make the right decision. You know, there's a lot to gain here in protecting our desert resources. There's a lot to lose if it goes the wrong way.
Thank you. Chris Clark. Is this a Chris Darwich and Cameron? Yes.
Samantha Waterman. I work for Cadiz. I am here to oppose the resolution, oppose AB 1000. In this new era of alternative facts, of science deniers, of those who, you know, say that climate change isn't real, we can't turn a blind eye to real scientific investigation. We've had a couple of our scientists here. Can't give you a lot in a minute, but we do have a lot of evidence to back up what we have claimed. But even if we were wrong about our scientific claims, we have a groundwater management plan that will protect the environment, in addition to which that plan is going to be overseen by the County of San Bernardino. The county has enforcement authority over that plan. And so even, again, if we were wrong, which I don't believe we are, the environment is very well protected. The company does not have control over the enforcement of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. So next speakers, and if I called your name, please line up. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
My name is Chris Clark. I'm the California Desert Program Manager for the National Parks Conservation Association. I'm also a Joshua Tree resident, and it's good to come in out of the heat a little bit, though I think I brought some of it with me. I would say that I am not qualified to rebut point by point the statements of the hydrologists that have spoken here today, but I am qualified to point out that the USGS, the nation's preeminent scientific organization with some of the best hydrologists in the world, disagrees. We have, as Sarah Friedman mentioned, a starting-to-thrive economy based on people visiting the parks in the desert and the preserves. They don't come to see dried-up springs. They don't come to see pipelines. AB 1000 protects jobs of my neighbors and my friends and my family in the California desert. I and the National Parks Conservation Association strongly urge you to support AB 1000. Thank you.
Thank you. Next set of speakers? I'm assuming you guys are repping the senator?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Good morning. My name is Chris Barwick, here on behalf of United States Senator Dianne Feinstein, to express support for Assembly Member Friedman's bill, AB 1000. I would like to submit three letters for the record and read a statement on behalf of the senator. During my 24 years in the Senate, I fought to protect and preserve California's majestic desert. Since the first bill to protect California's desert passed in 1994, the desert has been restored and local economies have flourished. All the progress is now at risk. We are facing the greatest threat I've ever seen to the desert. Cadiz, a private company, wants to profit by draining a vital aquifer that sustains life in the Mojave Desert. Using its friends in the administration, Cadiz is trying to roll back federal protections to avoid any federal oversight. Now, more than ever, we need strong state protections for the desert. AB 1000 is critically important to preventing the exploitation of groundwater basins under the desert lands by requiring state agencies to review proposals like the Cadiz Project. This common sense and practical approach, we should all support. This is why I strongly support AB 1000 to bolster state-level reviews of projects like Cadiz that threaten California's fragile desert groundwater resources.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think I have...it's Ernesto from the Laborers 300, and is it Seamus Garrity from the Assembly Member's office? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Council President Wesson, Council Member Harris-Dawson. I'm here on behalf of Sergio Escond, Business Manager of Laborers Local 300. Besides what my counterparts, Saoud Renteria, spoke about jobs, I mean, this is an important project for our members that live out in that area. I think the thing that we're dumbfounded with is this is the city of Los Angeles. We're trying to figure out why the city of Los Angeles is being asked to take a position on a project that's not within the city of Los Angeles. At what point would we expect the appropriate county that this project is in to take a position on a project in the city of Los Angeles if some of their residents felt they didn't agree with the project that's going on in the city of Los Angeles? I think, notwithstanding the arguments against this project, I don't think we're trying to take that away from the supporters of this bill. Our big issue is, why is the city trying to weigh in on this? So we ask you to please oppose AB 1000. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Yes.
My name is Seamus Garrity. I'm here to represent Assembly Member Laura Friedman. On behalf of Assembly Member Friedman, I'd like to thank Councilman Rue for submitting today's resolution and President Wesson for allowing the motion to be heard today. AB 1000 would create a common sense state review process that safeguards California's fragile desert lands and groundwater basins and ensure that desert groundwater basins are not harmfully exploited. State protections of this kind are a necessary response to efforts by the current federal administration to weaken federal environmental review in order to advance projects like the Cadiz Valley Water Conservation Recovery and Storage Project. We're out of time. The LA DWP held two hearings on AB 1000 and the Cadiz Project and has recommended that the city of Los Angeles support AB 1000. As Board President Mel Levine said, "We feel that the risks to the desert don't justify whatever profits or potential jobs might be gained from taking water out of this important desert aquifer."
Thank you. Okay, do we have staff? Did anybody submit a card that I didn't call their name? Okay, if I could have staff come forward. I guess I do have a few questions, but before I start, the legislative session ends when? Does it end Thursday, or is it...when does it end? Does it end the middle of next month, or...
John Wickham with the Chief Legislative Analyst. The legislative session ends September 15th, so there are three more weeks left in the session. The bill is currently in the Senate Appropriations Committee on the suspense file, and the deadline to move a bill from the Appropriations Committee to the Senate floor is this Friday, September 1st.
Okay. Now, I can't remember who it was. In fact, it may have been Ernesto. The counties and cities within the region, have they weighed in on this?
I don't have in front of me a list of the support or opposition to the bill. I'm sorry, I could track that down and get that for you if you like.
Okay. Well, if you would.
The Department of Water and Power Board of Commissioners has presented to you a position to support or recommendation to support AB 1000, and their justification for that is that the city is a member of the Metropolitan Water District, and they are concerned that actions here could create some liabilities at MWD that would negatively affect that organization from a budgetary standpoint.
Okay, well, coming in today, I was inclined, Mr. Harris-Dawson, to support this, and I haven't changed, okay? But I do think that there are some questions that I'd like to get answers to. I always listen when you have working people, their voice concerns, and sometimes it's our job to try to find that balance. And in order to find that balance, sometimes we need additional data. So what I'm thinking, and then maybe you can help me develop this, I'm thinking that we can move this, you know, from this committee, but not schedule it until we take a few more days in council. Then we can take a few more days to get more research. Not research done, I can make some calls to the Senate President and the Speaker and try to get a feel for what's going on right now. The bill is on suspense. It's gotta be moved in three days. We do have time, but we may not have time to have another hearing. So maybe what we can do is, as a committee, move forward without scheduling it just yet. We will still have time to react to whatever happens. So I just think that, you know, based on, you know, I think there are good arguments on both sides... on both sides. Like I said, coming in, it was my feel to move this. We have received some information that I feel compelled to check out, but I think that that's a way for us to do this, stay on the timeline, and in the event that something happens, we still have enough turnaround time to make sure that this is actually in council without us having to have a hearing, unless something really unique comes back and it's necessary for us to have a hearing. So John, you said that the 15th is the last legislative, so the legislative session usually ends the end of August or middle of September, so this time, we've fallen into the middle of September. So, you know, I thank everybody for coming down, respect everybody's opinion, a lot of respect for those that have concerns, a lot of respect for those who want us to act, so I do think that we should at least keep the conversation going. So, did you have...
So, if you describe what happens, what the two scenarios say, appropriation hears it by Friday and moves it, appropriations doesn't hear it at all, or they hear it and don't have a positive recommendation, like what happens in those three scenarios?
If they do not hear it, it remains in committee, and it would be held over to the beginning of next year, I believe, and there would be a very short timeframe in which it could be heard again and then moved forward. So that is basically a situation where the bill is not active and could be a dead bill. If they do approve it in committee, then it would go to the Senate floor, and then it would, it's basically two options there, yeah, two outcomes.
So there's, I agree with Council President on this matter and the committee chair. I was inclined to support this as well. You know, we always have a very open ear to folks who are concerned about protecting our environment, especially given the national threat to it at this moment. You know, we got 110 degrees here in Los Angeles, we got a tsunami in Houston, and who knows what else we'll have, and so we're always concerned about the condition of our environment, but we're also just as concerned about people's ability to work. So I've certainly heard some things in the last 12 to 15 hours that have given me some pause, so I like the president's recommendation that we leave this open as something that we can move forward with as a full council, but that, you know, we have time to come back to it, should the course of events allow us to do that. So I'm supportive, I'm supportive of your motion, Mr. President.
Okay, so with that said, I think that, without objection, we will approve, without objection, we will approve the item. Makes, I'll make some inquiries, and then we'll figure out how to go from there. And if your office could do a little research and get information back to us quickly, that will help me determine when it's appropriate for us to present this to the full council. When we do present it to the full council, I want to have all my questions answered, so when I make a recommendation to them, I make a thorough recommendation without any holes in it. But again, I'm comfortable enough in at least moving the process. So, without objection, so ordered. Mr. Clerk, is there any other business before this body?
No, sir. That clears the desk.
Okay, then thank everybody for coming. This committee is adjourned.